Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Board of Supervisors for October 23rd, 2012. Rule call?
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Foye?
Here.
Supervisor Saragosa?
Here. And today we have Regal Vargas that's going to help us with the moment of inspiration and with him is Sylvia. So, Regal, can you come up to you? And also can help us with the pledge after that to our flag. Welcome, Regal.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Saragosa. Members of the Board, Mr. Powers, good morning. My name is Regal Vargas. I work for Public Health as Division Manager. With me is Sylvia Lopez Navarro. She directs our chronic disease prevention programs. She has a short PowerPoint to highlight Food Day, National Food Day Celebration locally. We were celebrating last year and with her she brought also some of the gardeners that necessarily introduce at the end as well. So, she'll take it from here. Thank you.
And today we have a resolution we're going to hand to you at a time certain on Food Day, so.
Yes, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Good morning and thank you.
Good morning.
As Regal said, I have a short PowerPoint presentation that shows some of the activities that took place during Food Day last year. And I have lots of pictures that highlight some of the activities that took place at the Camino del Sol Community Garden. The Camino del Sol Community Garden has gone through a transformation in a short period of time. In just a year, due to the work of many and their dedication, it has gone from what you can see on the upper right-hand corner, from a dry plot of land into a very vibrant place where the community is coming together, as you will see as I go through the pictures. It's taken a lot of planning and a lot of hard work from many individuals, including many community members who volunteered their time. And those were the very first signs of change. Those were the very first vegetables that were growing at the garden and they were planted just a few days before the grand opening and Food Day. And Food Day was October 24th of 2011. We had the very first Food Day celebration. And it was a very well-attended event with great participation from, including Supervisor Saragosa who was there. He was able to address children from the local elementary school that came to participate and community members. He was able to talk about the importance of healthy eating, staying physically active to prevent chronic diseases.
You said that was 2011?
Correct, last October.
Well, Supervisor, it looks a lot younger in that picture. I was 59 then.
Yes, and please don't feel envious of him because they really put him to work that day.
That's right. I loaded up so many boxes, it's unbelievable.
He did. I went to look for him and he was diving into this great container, digging carrots and cabbages and apples. So, don't feel envious. So, we had participation from agencies in the community as well. Some of the activities that took place, as we were saying, nearly 400 bags of fresh fruits and vegetables donated from Food Share, our local food bank, were distributed to families in that community. Other activities included the children, approximately 140 children from Ramona Elementary School walked to the garden to participate in many of the activities where they learn about healthy eating, healthy food that is locally grown and how they can start at home. So, they all walked away with a container with seeds that they had planted in the day. And they were engaged in many of the other activities, not just the gardening class. They also participated in a health fair, education and health fair, in which they learned, as you can tell on the upper right-hand corner again, they were learning about how to stay healthy and physically active. They also learned that any space, even in the back of a truck, can be used to grow healthy foods. And that was one favorite. That's the Food Share garden truck and that was a favorite with children. They also got to participate in the healthy recipe taste test where the food was prepared at the garden and the children and the families got to participate in that. So, the Camino del Sol Community Garden has, due to the support of many, is a very successful program. And Food Day was one of the events in which we brought partners in the community together. So, we are very fortunate that the success, of course, is dependent on the support of many, including the Board of Supervisors, yourselves, the City of Oxnard, who is allowing us to use the plot of land and community members and the volunteers, the gardeners and many who are here today. So, there was a very well-attended and successful event. And thankfully, they didn't stop there because there's many activities that continue to happen at the garden. The gardeners have been busy growing pumpkins because they wanted to have something to share with the kids when they come this year. So, they've been raising pumpkins and they've been building a pumpkin patch. And I had an opportunity yesterday to go see the progress. And I was truly touched of all the hours that they had been spending building this pumpkin patch to create this experience for the preschoolers who are going to be coming tomorrow. We expect about 50 preschoolers and they created a maze and they built it with their own hands and I was truly touched to see that. Other activities, we had visits from the preschoolers. They came to see how the pumpkins are grown before they get to come to the pumpkin patch and walk away with a pumpkin. They're going to have activities that the gardeners and the volunteers have planned for them. From decorating pumpkins to baking something with pumpkins. I'm not sure what activities. They have many activities planned. The preschoolers also have come to the garden and volunteers along with staff. As you can see, the volunteers are leading the classes. So, those gardeners take the time to share with children and it's truly an inspiration. The children came and learned about how to grow healthy food, but also they had an opportunity to taste the fresh food grown in the garden. So, they had an opportunity to take a little snack and eat carrots grown in the garden. And the gardeners come together and the families, they share their harvest, they put it together for cooking demonstrations. So, those are events. So, it's a growing community. It's more than a garden. It has become a growing community with the work of volunteers and families. So, thank you again for your support, for giving us the opportunity, for supporting us and continuing to encourage our families to stay healthy. We do have Food Day, Food Day Celebration this year will be happening tomorrow on the 24th. We will be having the produce distribution again and we will be having the taste of the healthy recipes, a health fair and the pumpkin patch that the volunteers have put together.
So, one of the things that happens, you have a little march before this. You go into the garden, you have Zumba classes too that now the mothers and the dads are exercising for obesity and so forth.
Yes, that's correct. In many communities, including La Colonia. And the community of La Colonia area has been very supportive with this project and has been successful because of their support as well. I do have one of the gardeners here today who has been with the project since the very beginning.
Are they here to leave Stanford?
Ms. Nancy Kobashigawa, and she would like to say a few words to you.
Oh, good. Come right at Nancy. Welcome, Nancy.
Thank you. Good morning to the board and friends here. My name is Nancy Kobashigawa. My husband Yuki and I live in Oxnard and have been gardening at the Camino del Sol Community Garden since September of 2011. The gardeners of more than 40 plots there have been enjoying the fresh air, sunshine and exercise, growing fruits and vegetables organically. We're finding that organically grown produce not only tastes good, but are better for our health. The camaraderie with fellow gardeners is priceless. Fellow gardeners have asked me to convey our sincere gratitude to the board, to the County Health Department for the community garden. We give special thanks to Sylvia Lopez Navarro, Blanca Arias, Lizette Garcia and Grace Gomez for their hard work and dedication in the project. We thank you very much.
Thank you. And you have some other individuals. Can they stand?
Oh, yes.
Are they here? So, let's give them. Thank you so much and it's excellent, you know. And by the way, there's other gardens too, right Sylvia? The Gallatin Garden and I understand that Nylon Acres has a garden too. And in fact, on the day of caring, they set up a new garden over in Nylon too to get those folks into the gardening process too and over in Gallatin that I'm sure you're working on.
Yes, we're hoping to be able to support other gardens throughout the county.
Throughout the county. Thank you tremendously.
Thank you. We hope you can join us.
Thank you. And you're going to help us with the pledge?
Yes.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Regal, thank you so much and all the folks who have been here this morning. Thank you. Okay, our next item is minutes of October 9th. First and a second. And that's approved. Agenda review, Michael?
Yes, thank you Chair Saragosa. Just a couple of items. There's an addendum agenda, item 36, which is the Public Health approval of an authorization for the Public Health Director to sign an agreement with the Ventura County Human Services Agency to restore funding for the adolescent family life programs, the Cal Learn Program. There's also on item 23, there's a revised PowerPoint. On item 33, there's a board letter on exhibit one. We're distributing it on Friday, October 19th. And finally, on item 33, also we're adding CEO recommends approval as proposed.
And you have an addendum 36?
Which makes sense since it's our item. Yes, what they addendum is item 36.
Okay. Okay. And any board members who'd like to change or add, subtract?
Second.
The first and second. And that's approved. Okay, and then item seven, we have consent items 10 to 22.
I'd like to pull a few of these, 12, 16 and 22.
12, 16 and 22. And the rest of the items?
I'd like to comment on 14, I believe.
14? Okay.
No, that's okay. No, I'm not commenting.
Okay. And the rest of the items who'd like to make motion on the, and we'll pull 12, 16 and 22?
All right. Move the rest of consent.
Okay. Okay, so those are approved and then we'll go to item 12. Supervisor Foye?
I appreciate that. I just, again, struggle with this ideas engineering, what they're doing here. We're putting all this money into advertising instead of money into treatment. I just think it's not the right thing for us to be doing. So, I'd like to vote on this separately if possible.
Do you want any? Okay.
I don't know if you had made comment. My comment is the same every time we do this, so.
Okay, so what's the pleasure of the board on number 12?
I'll go ahead and move approval. One of the basis of the Mental Health Services Act funds is to make sure that we can outreach and get to that population that needs assistance. So, that's what the advertising will assist.
I think they know it's out there.
And that early intervention, you know, I think is extremely important, you know, and to prevent, you know, behavioral problems, I think is extremely important that we support that. I support that. I'll second that. Well, we've got a secondary, okay. So, that's approved and then we go item 16?
16. I was just curious. I just noticed in, you heard Jeff, for a long time we were always well-under on some of these contractual, you know, contracts we were doing. Just noticed that we got a lot of them that are over. We talked about the fire station that ended up at Seamy. We were going to be under budget now. It looks like it came over budget a few. I'm just curious, what's going on? Are we trying to be really tight on some of this estimation and we're just missing it by five, six points here? What's?
Well, I think there's probably a combination of explanations and I can describe the process that we go through. We're changing in the moment, but I mean, as a general comment, the people are bidding these things tight. We're seeing prices. They're coming in below our estimates on a lot of instances and.
But then I saw these were over.
Right, right. So, they're bidding tight and then they're coming in and, well, there are times when we're discovering things too.
Well, that's, I'm just, I'm curious. Understanding part of that contractual business, you know, a lot of people I know in that, a lot of times I got to get the job and then I'll work these change orders that come back and ding us a little bit. Is that maybe could be part of it?
It could be, although we do have a fairly significant process in place for approving change of work. And that process involves a very strict negotiation, a proof that it's not contractual work and then a budget authorization many times, in many cases by your board before we can go forward with this.
Right. I just noticed that our office was discussing this. We just noticed that there seemed to be over what we thought. Like I said, I thought the fire station Seamy in Yosemite was going to be under and it looked like it came over a few percent, five or six points.
We'd be happy to go into detail and show you what the negotiations were on any one of these.
Well, I mean, I'm just curious if there's something different because before you always, you seemed to be there and I didn't know if things were tightening, maybe costs are going up that we didn't have control. Just a thought, so. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so we got a.
Okay, that's, I'll make a motion on that.
Okay, you got a first and a second.
Good questions Supervisor Foye.
So, that's approved and we go into item 22?
And 22 is, we have the sheriff here in regards to his electronic monitoring. I thought it was something that they've done to try to really streamline and define some efficiencies and I didn't think we should. I know there's music when you walk up all the time.
Is that part of the?
I'd like to thank our HR director for that introduction.
Anyway, just give us some overview of what you mean.
Is that the new theme for the show?
Yep, that's it. I thought hail to the chief was a little overboard, so we're going with that.
Well, we really know what you mean. We believe that.
Chair Saragosa, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Jeff Dean, Sheriff. The item before you involves our electronic monitoring program, which has taken off in the past couple of years as another method for us to help reduce our jail population and keep our costs down. The penal code requires that we come before the board for cost recovery. And we've gone through, since we began, we've modified our pricing structure. So, it's a floating scale to, for those that can afford it, we think they should be able to pay up to $50 a day. And in essence, the change was we went from net salary to gross salary because we found people had significantly large trust funds, but they weren't necessarily working because they had such large trust funds and they were avoiding having to pay the maximum fee. So, this is just a way to actually collect all the revenue that we should from people that can't afford to pay. But on the other hand, we don't want to, we don't want to keep people in custody that can't afford to pay. So, it's working well. We have about 20 people out right now. We're going slowly. The captain that approves these releases has a picture of my family on their desk because they realize that they sign off to release somebody in electronic monitoring, something happens, it's going to be my name on the front page of the paper that someone re-offended out there in the community. So, it is working. It's growing and it's moving ahead rapidly. And we are, they're on a very sophisticated tracking system, which includes alcohol tracking and we track them 24 hours a day down to within about 10 feet.
Sheriff, is this a pre-trial individual?
It's actually, we have some pre-trial and some post-sentencing.
So, instead of keeping them in jail, you actually put a monitor on them?
Along their ankle.
Send them back to work and be productive temporarily?
Exactly, yes. Our question is, are they a threat to the public safety? If they're not a threat to the public safety, let's put them out in the community so they can actually work and, you know, feed their families and pay their child support or whatever they might be doing.
In the meantime, we save money by not keeping them in jail and so forth and.
Yes, yes.
I do appreciate you looking at this to find the ones that can't afford to do this versus saying everybody's equal. Right, big difference because there's a good cost to monitor this, isn't there?
That's right.
Yeah, there is a cost and we're hoping to recover more and more. It's actually kind of a concept that's sweeping across the country is bail really an appropriate measure of who we should release and who we shouldn't release? Or is a person really just a threat to public safety because they don't have the resources, should we release them anyway? So, working with the bench and the bench here in Ventura County is starting to look at different options on just a complete release package.
Michael?
And doesn't the state law give your office now more discretion? You don't have to have minimum custody time, for example?
Exactly, yeah. There used to be parameters of how long somebody had to be in custody before we could do it. And now through realignment, one of the upsides was they did loosen up that standard. Thank you.
So, they don't have to have a specific time, for example, before you had to, if there was 15 days, they could go. And the past 15 days, they would have to stay in jail?
It used to be you had to serve a minimum. If you were sentenced, you had to serve a minimum amount of time before you could be eligible for electronic monitoring and that's been loosened up also.
So, we're saving money. Go ahead.
Thank you. I've been looking at other ways that you can get revenue from people who are incarcerated particularly and looking at, I think Supervisor Stone in Riverside has been focusing a lot of his effort on that. And they're getting funds now for court fees, a lot of it associated with DUIs too and then also some for incarceration. So, they have the funds available, you know, if they're, you know, have the income, why should the taxpayers be paying for them? So, I hope you'll continue to look further into other ways besides just electronic monitoring that we can recoup fees. I think their first year of doing this, they're getting close to a quarter million dollars back.
We actually called them and we've been ongoing discussions with them. A lot of things they're doing now, we've been doing all along, collecting fees. And then they've got a couple of things that are waiting to see if they're going to be held constitutional or not before we jump in there. But I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I appreciate your work.
Supervisor Bennett?
You know, implementing a program like this just takes a lot of common sense. And I just want to express on behalf of the citizens, I believe there's just a lot of confidence in you and your department in terms of using common sense to do this and to not politicize this thing one way or the other. I mean, some people would sit there and not put anybody on electronic monitoring because like you said, you know, it just takes one and then you get your name in the headlines. But just have the courage to just say, hey, we're going to do this right. And I believe that this community has a lot of belief that you will handle this properly and not be both either overly cautious or overly loose as you go forward. So, thank you very much. It's one of those classic programs where the public has to have that sort of sense of confidence. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Long?
And also Sheriff, certainly to comment that the working relationship that your office has with all of law enforcement and with the bench is unique in the state. And I think because of our CCP work or the CCP work as a result of already having that good foundational relationship. So, this, looking at this program and looking at how to advance other methods to both save the taxpayers' monies, but also the courts are in dire straits, law enforcement, we're all going to be challenged. So, appreciate the good work.
We're very lucky, as we've said many times in this county, what a good team effort we have.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any other questions?
Can we play hail to the chief now?
Where's the HR? Now we have a song for you to welcome.
Thanks for coming up, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's approved. I don't have any public comments cards, so I'm going to pass that. Board comments and I'm going to debate. Supervisor Long has some.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate being able to go first. First, I'd submit this list to adjourned memory of and then this came up rather quickly. So, I asked for the board's indulgence here. I am a member of the Camrio Rotary Club and Camrio Rotary or Rotary International has a national program called the Group Study Exchange Program. And it's the Rotary Foundations Program and it's again worldwide. It's a program that is unique for cultural and vocational exchange opportunities for businesspeople and professionals between the age of 25 and 40 who are in the early stages of their career. And our Camrio Rotary and Rotaries in the county have had the pleasure of hosting for a month the GSE team that comes. a month the GSE team that comes from Sri Lanka. And so I invited them to come in this morning because this is their last day in their, well, their last day in this county. And my Rotary Club was hosting them for the last few days on visiting different things in the county. And in fact, they were, they did visit the jail, so they've seen that operational side of what county government does. So I'd like to invite the entire Sri Lanka team to come forward, and Don Tilquist from our Rotary Club has been the chosen one to be able to bring the group in, please come down. And to invite them, just if I might, to say a few words. The team leader, Sylvester, I will not try to pronounce all of the names, we have, with our team, we have a male medical director, a female architect, a female biotechnologist, a female global trading systems vendor, and then a team leader. So doctor, architect, biotechnologist, trading systems, and then our team leader. And they, as I said, come out of the country of Sri Lanka, and I would like to invite you to say a few words. I have prepared, and I have to have to thank the CEO's office, Linda Catherine Lee for her help in pulling this together, and Ashley to bring together just some gifts we're going to give from the county of Ventura, and to welcome them and hope that they've enjoyed their visit, and if you would share just a little bit with us.
Welcome, was Don, or you're going to share some?
No, Sylvester.
Sylvester, welcome.
And if you would introduce the team, because I, just with the names, I'd stumble over and I apologize.
Thank you for the opportunity given to us by your board and members to inviting us and to witness the proceedings today. It was a great experience for all of us. My name is Sylvester, I'm a Rotaryian, and this is my team. In my team, there are four members. That's Arjuna, he's a medical doctor by profession. Next to him is Khanchana, an architect by profession. Next to her is Nilumi, a biotechnologist by profession. And next to Nilumi is Shashika, a financier by profession. I take this opportunity to thank all citizens of Camrio for the welcome they gave to us, and we visited a lot of beautiful places in here. One of the experiences that we went to jail and we came out very soon, right? It was a good experience to find out how the operation is. One of the most interesting and informative sessions that we got. So on behalf of my team and all Sri Lankans, I take this opportunity to thank you for the opportunity given to us, thank you very much.
And thank you so much and welcome, and thank you to Supervisor Long for...
Thank you, Sheriff, and I'm going to put together just a quick tally of the members of the class that welcomed them and thanked them for visiting our county, to welcome them after you, the team leader, and thank you, appreciate your visit, I hope you enjoyed our county, and...
Supervisor Long, and thank also the Rotary Club for, you know, for Camrio for sponsoring. You want to say, you want to share anything? The Rotary Club?
We're listening, very thank you. That concludes my comments.
Okay, Supervisor Boy.
That was great, I was just saying that. They look so young, must be getting older. Only some of us. Yeah, okay, anyway. I just wanted to recognize a global business, you know, one that's located in Simi Valley, Alcoa Fasting Systems, you know, they're a great example of a corporate citizen. Alcoa last, in October, designated, October's the month for service, and 58% of all their employees volunteered over 85,000 hours, is what they're, that's a lot. I mean, it's just, it's great. I mean, even in Simi, what they did is they restored the gardens at Hollow Hills, and they usually give to, you know, the regular foundations, the Boys and Girls Club, the Simi Education, and I just want to thank Jim, Jim Vigor, because he is just part of everything. It just goes to show that the corporate community really wants to do a great job. The other thing is, I had the opportunity to attend the Ag Annual Dinner, and they honored Rob Roy for 35 years. He's not retiring, but it was just, you know, it was just great to hear them say good things about people before you retire or at your funeral or something, you know, it's just all the stuff that he's done for the community and the Ag community, and they were just very grateful for that. And I was just glad to see that happen before somebody retires or passes on. Those are my comments. Nobody adjourned memory of, so it's a good day.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of going to the Ventura County Taxpayers Association luncheon where Dan Walters was the speaker, and I have to say he was very negative, and talked a lot, yes, and particularly about Proposition 30. And I think his main objective of 30 was that it is a, kind of a short-term measure with no long-term funding, so at some point, the, it will become, our budget will become even more structurally unbalanced at the state level. But in, there wasn't really anything there, what you do instead of Prop 30 in the sense that, you know, we are facing here at the county, the cost for realignment of the prisoners, and if the funding is not available after nine months or so, we're stuck. And so there's, it definitely goes to the heart of the problem of having a state that's fiscally unbalanced. So that was kind of a depressing luncheon. Also, however, the NABO had an awards dinner. NABO is the National Association of Women Business Owners, and I just wanted to highlight the woman who was awarded with the Business Woman, Business Owner of the Year Award. And she's a Newberry Park woman, was diagnosed with bipolar disorder after having her second child 13 years ago. She struggled with plenty of dark episodes while still trying to balance her role as a mother, wife, and CEO of her company. By the time, then this Allison Balter became a computer consulting consultant and programming and started a firm, Info Tech Services. She's secured contracts with Fortune 500 companies, and the federal government has written books about computer programming, and quickly building a reputation leading to being an expert in her field. All the success, however, could not quite quiet her bouts with depression, the bipolar, that bipolar caused. With the study within the support of her family and medical and psychological treatments, she has regained control. She says that people think you can just get out of bed and forget about it, just suck it up, but usually when people get to know me, they don't have an issue with it, but in general, they do have an issue, and there is that stigma on mental illness. She's not only an accomplished business owner and raised a family, she's also become, overcome these personal health challenges. She's written over 14 books, and it was nice to see her honored. In July, she was also named Microsoft's Most Valuable Professional of 2012, so nice to see her overcoming that and succeeding so well. Also, this was the week that Thousand Oaks High School celebrated their 50th anniversary, Go Lancers, so that was nice to see. And then I would also ask that we close in honor of the people on this list, and finally just point out there's still spots open for the Rick and Mike Show, the City Managers Unwrap with Mike Sedell and Rick Cole, that's Thursday evening out in Thousand Oaks. You can contact my office if you'd like to, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much, somebody who's known to all the board members here, Bert Perillo, who often has come. He lost his father, longtime resident in Oxnard, served in the American Merchant Marine Service during World War II. Eugene was very involved in the community, was part of the early El Rio Nylon Acres meetings that ultimately led to the El Rio MAC, served on the board of the United Water Conservation District for 15 years, and survived by his son Bert. The, I had just one of the nicest meetings, I got to attend the Oakview Women's Club's 60th Anniversary. Now, they've been around for 60 years, and what was really cool is, a woman who was a charter member of the Oakview Women's Club was in attendance. She joined when she was 18, and you talk about salt of the earth, just people who want to do good things for their community, it was just, it was just the best. I really enjoyed it, and I've always liked the Oakview Women's Club, but I just didn't realize sort of the long tradition that they had. And then Ojai celebrated their Ojai Day in Ojai and at Libby Park, and great to stop by there. And then I know Supervisor Zaragosa was at it also, Supervisor Long, but Tri-County Central Labor Council Labor Leader of the Year Dinner on Saturday night at the Marriott was there, and was a good event also. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Zaragosa, can I also just say something about one of the individuals who did pass away last week, Carol Phillips, and she was actually one of the original Thousand Oaks High School alumni, but she also, right out of college, became a teacher at Manzanita School in Newberry Park, and she taught at Kalina Middle School, and was the president of Weathersfield, I mean, the principal of Weathersfield and Westlake Elementary School, so I know that she's very much missed by all those who knew her, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I also had a pretty interesting weekend. I attended the Kiwanis Firefighter of the Year Award over in Oxnard at the Tower Club, you know, the first responders, you know, once you hear what the firefighters do, it's just amazing what, when you're down 911, you know, if you have a loved one that has a heart attack or a stroke or whatever, or one of your children, you want the firefighters there, so it was really great to be there for a firefighter of the year award. Also, I attended the Oxnard High School Hall of Fame, you know, the principal there started the Hall of Fame, and I was lucky enough to be one of those individuals last year, so they called me this year to be the keynote speaker, and Stan Daley was one of the individuals that, he was so excited, and he talked about the bridge to nowhere. Remember the one here in Camrio? But anyway, he's a really great guy, and Hauser, remember?
Oh, Don Hauser?
Don Hauser was one of the Hall of Famers, and also a 1920 CIF team that was honored, and some other individuals that they were honored in the Hall of Fame. Additionally, I also attended the MABA, the Mexican-American Bar Association Dinner, and there was testimonies by five young ladies that really 4.0s that are going to Berkeley and Stanford and so forth, really highly educated, motivated individuals. And one of them got a computer, this one gal, her parents were field workers earning seven and eight dollars an hour, and she's 21 years old, first computer she got, you know, because she was always borrowing the computer and going to the library and so forth, pretty emotional testimony. And also I attended the CERT team program over, and I want to congratulate our chief Mark, you know, from the fire department. We had about 100-plus CERT individuals that are, of course, you know, getting ready for, you know, the earthquake that's going to happen, in case of a tsunami, in case of other fires and so forth, it was great to be there Saturday morning. And also I turned at the, attended, excuse me, the Fraternity Order of Eagles. They had a conference here in Oxnard, they had Eagles Club, had individuals from Oregon, from Washington, from Nevada, from Arizona, from all over the western US, and their theme, of course, is to help families and youth and public safety. Really great program. And in addition to that, I also attended the Health Fair in El Rio by Wright Road. And Wright Road, as you know, we paved that road, it was dirt and mud for years and years, and I was talking to the principal, and she was really thanking me, or thanking the board and all of us for paving that road, because he says every time it rained, the attendance would go down, because the kids wouldn't walk through the mud, and the kids that did would get the flu or some kind of problem, so I was really, really happy. Also, I mentioned it to Michael, that we had almost every single agency from the county there, the health, VCMC, the sheriff's department, the fire department. The county's well represented in all those health fairs, and I really commend, you know, the county for doing that. And also the, as Supervisor Bennett and Long mentioned, we attended the Tri-County's Labor Council, the Labor Leaders Award in Oxnard at the Marriott, you know, so. And also my staff attended some other meetings. We attended, the Coes, I think, had a Health Fair over in Colonial, and also I had, Lourdes attended, also the Clergy Council meeting over in Oxnard, so we're a little busy, so we had a great time. So, and also I'd like to adjourn in memory of this folks on this list, so thank you. Okay, our next item is item 32? 32?
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Powers. My name is Taliya Barrera with the Workforce Investment Board of Ventura County. Item 32 before you is the approval of a recommendation to appoint two new members to our board, Gregory Lu with Jack's Manufacturing in Simi Valley, and Bruce Stensley with EDCBC in Camrio. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I just think it makes a lot of sense to appoint Bruce, so that there's more coordination between Ventura Economic Development Collaborative and Workforce Investment Board, nice chat.
Two good appointments. Thank you so much.
Move the recommended action, that's already been moved.
Bruce has proved to be a really good guy out there.
Yes. Thank you so much. Our next item is item 33, and this is Dr. Bob, or our HR person with the radio, with the phone.
My apologies, you took on a life of your own.
She's so humble, she needs music for herself.
Good morning, Chair Zaragosa, members of the board, Mr. Powers. For the record, Kelly Shirck, County Executive Office, Human Resources. Today's board letter before you is the request to approve retiree rates for medical, dental, and vision, and Susan DeMio of Benefits Division will be presenting the information for you.
Any questions? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Chair Zaragosa, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Susan DeMio, County Executive Office, Human Resources. Our current retiree benefits program expires on 12/31 of this year, and in preparing for this year's renewal, we expect the double-digit increases. Our benefits consultant, Aon Hewitt, was seeing premium increases between 8% to over 40% this year, and we asked them to conduct a request for proposal. Only one vendor submitted a proposal that met the county's criteria that included our non-Medicare retirees, and that vendor was Health Net. Now with that in mind, and facing a potential increase of 8% to 10%, just want to let you know that our increases in 2011 were 31%, the increases in 2012 were 14%. So we worked with Aon Hewitt to restructure our benefit plans to try and maintain affordability for our employees and for our retirees. Now, on October 2nd, your board approved our flexible benefits program and the rates for that program. The county allows our eligible retirees to participate and purchase the county health plan offerings, which are the same as the active employees for the non-Medicare retirees. The retiree pays the premiums, which are developed by blending the active and the retirees' costs. Now with our retirees being older and generally costing more, the premium that they pay is less than the true cost of coverage. This is, creates an implicit subsidy that has a financial reporting obligation under the Governmental Counting Standards Board. By combining the retirees and the active experience pool, significant savings are achieved for the retirees. The relative impact to the active rates would be a variance of 2.78%. There are currently 834 retirees participating in our medical plans. Now, the non-Medicare eligible retirees and their dependents participate in the same plans as actives with the same benefits. In 2013, the non-Medicare retirees will have a choice of three medical plans. Our Health Net Elect Open Access HMO, we are combining our former high option and low option into one low option, which has a typical office visit co-payment of $20. The savings for those that are currently in the high HMO that will be moved to the low HMO will be nearly 29%, and those in the low HMO will still achieve a savings of about 0.4%. Now with our PPO, we have made modifications to a high deductible health plan that is still a PPO, and we're increasing the individual deductible from 1,000 per person to 3,000 per person. The family deductible increases from 3,000 per family to 6,000 per family, and the in-network coinsurance will increase to 30% from 20%. The current PPO members will save 36%, which is approximately 4,000, well, it's over 4,000 a year. So the increase to deductible difference is well-covered by the savings in the premium. Our Medicare eligible retirees and dependents with Medicare A and B will have the same plan offerings that we currently have, and there are four to choose from, which are listed on the exhibit with the rate change. listed on the exhibit with the rate changes on the attached. There are no changes to the Medicare retiree plans, there are no changes and no increases to the dental or vision plans. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I had mentioned this before, but can you give me more about the philosophy of the, you know, the increase in deductible that we're seeing with our recent changes? It seems to me, while it may well work itself out because you're paying less in premiums, I'm just wondering about what the effect is if people may be less inclined to seek at some point care because, you know, it's all going to be basically out of pocket.
Under the PPO, there are in-network preventive services that are covered at a $40 office visit copayment, so the necessary preventive annual exam type of coverage is still in place, and it's not subject to deductible, nor are the prescription copayments and things that are necessary to maintain maintenance drugs. So it's basically for nonessential services that they have to deal with the deductible.
Okay, and so the premise is that hopefully people won't get in a situation where they're going to need to kick in the more expensive costs because we're doing so much in preventative care?
Well, that's true, but it does also give them the freedom, and they'll be saving $4,000 in premium for an increase in deductible to 3,000 if they need it. If they stay healthy and they don't need it, they've saved ahead.
Okay, and I also appreciate the fact this is all vetted through the committee and the employees, so definitely support the motion, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Let me just say, I think the, I understand your concern, and I think what you're trying to say is that you've got to, you go to the hospital, I wouldn't call them nonessential services, because you need to go to the hospital, it's essential, but I think what you're trying to say is that if we can do this, since 90% of us, probably more, don't go to the hospital, and we just go to the doctor once a year, maybe once every couple of years, it's a way for us to save and control our premium costs, and hopefully what you're going to do is you're going to save that $4,000 in premium, you're going to put that aside, and you're going to use that when you go. So if you look at it from the standpoint over the next three years, I go in the hospital one time, and I've been able to save $12,000, but I got to pay three, that's where I'm going to make up the difference. So if our people are disciplined and we can do that, I think in the long run, that's where our savings is going to come from, if we're in need of it, right? And so we're trying to figure out how we can totally control the, I wouldn't say totally, but control this outgoing cost, and the more you're moving to is what most of the private sector have done too, is the higher deductible, HR, TSA plans or whatever, try to put that money aside, try to do that. The only time it hurts somebody is you jump on the plan, and the next week or two, boom, I'm in the hospital, it's going to be a bigger hit out of my pocket, there's no question about it. But that's affecting the smallest portion, we're trying to affect the largest portion, which is how do I save premium for our employees? And that's kind of, I think, and that's really, if you look at, that's where they're trying to get to, and it's the right thing to do. If you go back 1980, when the average, you know, deductible was $100 or $200, the average office was $15, people never, insurance company never got kicked into it, it was just, we're paid out of our pocket, and this is kind of what we're going back to, is have a share in this cost and try to control our costs, and I think that's where you're trying to get. So, again, there's no question, the person that has to hit it right off the bat before they save the money, it's going to be a little bit harder on them, but for 90, 95% of us, it's going to be the better way to go, so I appreciate where you're going with that.
And what I should also mention with this new high deductible health plan PPO for the non-Medicare participants, they also have the option of enrolling in a health savings account to set aside some of these savings and save for their deductible and expenses in the event that they need.
Yeah, and that's the key, is because once you save it, you have this money in your account, you start thinking, hmm, am I going to use it, am I not? That's what, and that's what these plans were set for, is you start to get more involved in your healthcare, and at the end, if you don't use it, you get to throw that into your retirement, you get to use that opportunity, so it's a much better way to go. It's just getting people past the idea, I just pay a premium, I go to the doctor, I have to think a little bit more and be more involved. It's psychological change for a lot of people, but it's the better way to go.
Supervisor Long.
Well, and I would hope that somehow we can call that out, make that known, let folks know that, you know, I think we've taken good direction here, but that at the end of the day, their responsibility in being able to set those funds aside for, you know, just in case, so, and I'm not, it's up to you to decide how to put that in bold type, or, you know, different italic, or something that would get their attention.
We have information available, and as they enroll, both for actives and the early retirees, we have a whole packet of information that we'll be reaching out and providing to them to let them explore the options that are in their best interest.
Michael?
Thank you. I would just add that this is one of the choices, so they have, the retirees have a menu of choices, so if they do not choose to go this route, which is perfectly fine, they can go with the county healthcare plan, for example, this is a commercial announcement, sorry. So, you know, so it's just one of the menu of choices that it gives them, so.
Thank you, okay, we've got a first and a second on this, vote it. Okay, that's approved, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is item 34.
It was nice to see being able to bring those rates down from what they originally were going to be.
That's right. And this is a reappointment of Dr. Levin to the Children and Families Commission.
Moving back to the action.
And a second.
Thank you for that report.
Okay. Okay, and that's approved? And our next item's item 35, and I'd like to share to the board that I'll be, I'll be excusing myself from this item, because I have a possible conflict of interest, and I own some property, and within 300 feet from this SER3, so I will not be voting on this. Go ahead.
Chair Zaragosa, members of the board, Mr. Powers, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Taliya Clifford, I'm with the Public Works Agency, and I'm the director of the Watershed Protection District. I'd like to start with just a minor housekeeping matter. Recommendation one is seeking authorization for the director to sign the grant agreement. I'm requesting the board revise the reading, the wording, to read the director or his designee, as that's more in keeping with our usual business practice. On the surface, the issue before you today is simply the acceptance of grant funding and authorizing the Watershed Protection District to undertake grant agreements associated with the funding. However, I think there's more to that story. The Watershed Protection District, like all public works agencies, departments, has the responsibility for a great deal of public infrastructure. Part of that responsibility includes a financial burden associated with building, operating, and maintaining the infrastructure. As you're aware, our costs over time are far greater than our revenues, so we systematically search for alternative sources of funding, such as grants, to supplement our revenues. We work in a collaborative fashion as well with watershed coalitions, other agencies, land developers, special interest groups, and citizens interested in maintaining the health and safety of the watersheds. We also seek project partners to assist in funding watershed projects. The partners include, for example, cities in Ventura County, land developers, groups such as the Nature Conservancy, and even individuals with an interest and concern for the watersheds. In this particular instance, we did not have any funding partners. Instead, the item in front of you deals with state grant funding available for levies. The Department of Water Resources made funds available through the local levy assistance program. Due to the diligence of many people, we were able to secure grant funding through two funding streams, one for the evaluation of levies, and the other for the construction of critical levy repairs. We received approximately $9.4 million for 10 levy projects. We are very proactive and aggressive when we seek funding, and do not merely write grant applications and send them in. Instead, what we do is we invest a great deal of time and effort going after these dollars, in this case, we put efforts in just hoping we could get $1 million out of the $15 million that were available. We reviewed potential projects, researched the guidelines, and then we determined, actually, that they could be revised to enable a broader suite of projects, so we recommended that, and we also believe that the funds could be used to cover some of the costs that we had already incurred. So in addition to completing thorough and comprehensive grant applications, we also sought revisions to the guidelines, and I think our efforts certainly bore fruit. Eighteen agencies received funding through this grant program, with three agencies capturing almost 60% of the grant funds available. We were one of those three. Our $9.4 million that we received represents over 19% of the total funding available, which I think is quite amazing considering our population is only approximately 2% of all of California. I'm very proud of the efforts of my staff, and we will continue to work collaboratively with others to ensure the health and safety of our watersheds. We will continue to reach out to our project partners and prospective project partners, and will continue to pursue all grant opportunities with rigor and passion. I hope to stand in front of you many times, asking for the acceptance of funds and authorization to undertake grant agreements. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Let me just say something real quick, Supervisor. Supervisor Zaragosa can't participate in this, he has a home in this area, and would benefit in some of this differently than the rest of the public, so, but I'll take over as vice chair. Supervisor Bennett, you have a comment?
Oh, I thought you were going to take his phone.
No, no, no.
That was nice of you. The, two things that I wanted to say, one, welcome aboard, it's the first time you've presented here in front of us, and must be nice to be able to come with such good news, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And the second thing is, it is remarkable, and I don't think that we can overestimate the value that we are receiving here, the citizens are receiving, because of the ability in county government to collaborate, and if we hadn't collaborated, we wouldn't be getting, we wouldn't be 2% of the population getting 20% of the money. That is a remarkable thing, it is now the new standard, that's what we expect with each of these grant applications as they come in, but that is a tribute to a culture that has been created here, and I feel confident that you'll continue that culture, as will Mr. Pratt in terms of having us move forward with that, that kind of culture so that we can be successful. The whole world of watershed protection is rapidly evolving with the new stormwater regulations, you know, it used to be flood control truly just keep people from being flooded, and now it's so much more in terms of what the mandate is. Everybody's going to have to hustle, everybody's going to have to nail down every dollar in grant money that you can, particularly in a time when state and federal funding's going to be cut. I'm just proud of the fact that we have a county here that seems to do a really good job of that, so congratulations to you guys, and Mr. Powers, and the leadership in keeping this culture all moving along, thank you.
I just also welcome, and thanks for the good news. It's also nice to see reimbursements coming, and I appreciate the fact that you're looking at broadening the scope, as Supervisor Bennett was saying, I'd like to see more of that out in East County, particularly my district, and we have some great land out there that we use as a flow adjustment that we need to purchase, so eventually, hopefully, we'll be able to do that too, but it is, since FEMA is requiring us to, you know, change all these levies, it's nice to see the state has the funds that we can utilize for it, so thank you.
Great, okay, we've got a first and a second.
Okay, that passes.
Supervisor. Yours? Thank you. Our next item is the adendum item 36, and thank you, Jeff.
I like how Supervisor Bennett put the bar pretty high on that, next time he shows up.
Good morning again, Chair Zaragosa, members of the board.
Good morning.
Mr. Powers. Rego Vargas, again, with Ventura County Public Health, Division Manager. Before you is the item for our public health director to sign an agreement with our partners at Human Services Agency to restore the CalLearn program. The CalLearn program is an intensive case management program for teens that are expecting or parents, and we help them to have a sustainable life for themselves and their children through, again, case management, and we would also like the approval to get three fixed positions added. I'll take any questions.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you, it's a good program, we know that at one time there was another program that helped the Sisters of Pregnant Teens to help convince them not to become another pregnant teen, and I'm wondering, you know, if there's still some emphasis to try to move on that program too.
We do our, we have our AFLP program, is our non-required, non-meditative program, as well as CalLearn, our efforts are primarily to keep the children in school, graduate, but also to not have repeat births themselves or their siblings, so whereas we don't have specific funding for that program, our two programs do work around that, also our public health nursing programs and other efforts in our health department and our agency go towards promoting education and awareness around limiting or preventing sibling pregnancies.
Kind of working with the whole family.
Yes.
Supervisor.
Yeah, Supervisor, I thank you, you brought that up a couple times, and certainly support raising that, because when we had that, it had proven success, and to be able to, however we can integrate that effort in any of these other, in all of these programs that we interact with the adolescents and the siblings, valuable to do, just in the reaching out and the education side of it, so I appreciate it.
That's a pretty good success rate.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, so we got a first and a second on that? Rego, thank you. Okay. And that is approved, and our next item is a 9:45 time cert, and so we're going to take about a five-minute break.
about a five-minute break. about a five-minute break.
Well, a couple of our members noticed that the clerk recorder's office was sending out addressed envelopes that were going east of Colorado. Now, out of 12,000, they recognized that there were 10 pieces of mail on a daily basis that went to zip addresses, zip codes, east of Colorado. And that you may be aware of the postal service's new program, If It Fits, It Ships. And they thought that we could take advantage of that. And they looked at that, and in each case, they could save approximately $5. Now, this is only 10 to 15 pieces of mail every day, but $5 savings, on average, was achievable. They felt empowered because of the program that the county has, that they could make this happen. They didn't have to come to management, they didn't have to go through a lot of process. They talked to the staff at the clerk recorder's office, who were excited at the possibility of this savings. Dave Valenzuela, from the clerk recorder's office, saw the possibilities and arranged for training for all of his staff, because he wanted to make sure that they would recognize these pieces of mail and be able to take advantage of this program. Again, if it fits, it ships. So, the important message that I got out of this was, here's the staff, because of this program, they feel empowered. They're encouraged every day. They get that message from you and the CEO's office, that we need to save money, no matter how small, at every opportunity. And they accomplish that. Must be going wrong though. Now, the savings, $13,000, nothing to be ashamed of, but not huge like some of the numbers we hear. But again, it's that message, that the staff and that every member of the county family is thinking where they can save a few bucks, what they can do to protect those taxpayer dollars. Your message has gotten through. At this point, I want to introduce some of the key players here. Kristin Ranson, the courier. Can you stand Kristin? Kristin, sorry. Chris Ackerman, Chris Lamone, David Valencia Valenzuela, from clerk recorder's. This was a team effort. GSA takes great pride in partnering with our other agencies. This is just one example, and I guarantee you're going to see more from the business support group of GSA, time and time again. Any questions?
Steve, I just want to share with you that PR, PR is so important. And your staff has that PR, you know, and I think you said it, do the work and improve the work. And then, like, the $5 savings, it multiplies day after day after day, and other improvements too, though. Your staff is very, very good too, by the way, so I commend you for that. I think that public relations is so important, to do it with a smile, I think is extremely important. It's the same way as when you answer the phone, I've called many companies for whatever, and if the person on the other side has that smile, it really makes you feel good. But if they kind of say, "Well, can I help you?" "No, no, I don't care," you can almost feel it. But that smile is so important, you know, to convey to the public and also to your fellow employees, so I commend you for that.
All right. Let me just say, Ron, this is great, great news. I mean, the idea, first of all, that people just now are taking it on themselves, to see issues, find issues, and that's what this is all about. There's no way we up here know what these people are doing, and how, like you say, what the things you find, and you see it, it started becoming ingrained, and to me, that's the exciting part. $13,000, nothing to sneeze at. I mean, we've got a lot of other places that we could use $13,000 for doing exactly the same thing, that much cheaper and much more effective. And that people should take pride in finding these solutions, so that's tremendous, what you... But the biggest thing to me is that you said, they didn't have to go anyplace, to go to some level of management to do it. They could just do it on their own. That is great. Because what that does is that frees them to be as open, whatever I can do to find. There's too many organizations that say, "Well, if you have an idea, it's got to come to me first, and I'll tell you." But that, we've got to make sure it doesn't happen, because these people know how to do this. We've got to free them to do it, and so what you said about empowering them, that's an exciting part. So, congratulations, thank you for what you've done, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
I'd say one quick thing. Just the other day, I was in an unnamed department, and an employee was talking to another employee. You know, we've all kind of partially, you know, and I was only hearing part of the conversation, but somehow, it was some kind of recommendation going, "Hey, this doesn't make sense to me." And the employee said to the other employee, "But what do I know? I just work here," right? And it reminded me, I thought, boy, that's exactly what we're talking about. And it reminded me that it always, you know, change with 8,000 people, always, you know, takes a while. But I said to myself, no, in another year or two, you're not going to just say, "I just work here." It was a new person working here, they hadn't been here long, was one of the things that was conveyed. But I think we just want to strip that out of this organization, when everybody goes, if they can find a way to save taxpayers' money, that they should do it, that they're going to get reinforced for it wherever we can, and make that really just a key part of this culture. So, congratulations.
Thank you. But one thing I want to share too, you're the role model, you're the example, you've gone to my office many times, and I know they figure, hey, well, he's a supervisor. But to go out there and say, "Are things working okay? You know, are the monitors working okay? Are we doing X or Y or Z?" And that's important, you know, to go out and find out if we're, you know, if we need anything. And that's extremely important, I believe that. So, thank you.
Before I introduce our next speakers, I'm going to leave you with one thought, another thing from the business support group. You'll recognize these brown envelopes. And if you see that little brass tab at the top, if you use envelopes without that brass tab when you're mailing them, you can save 34 cents. And the business support group wouldn't let me come here without leaving you with them. They found out I was coming, they said, "You've got to bring this." They have already reached a good portion of their customers, but they want to get the word to the whole county family. Those envelopes have a place, but not in the mail. In the mail, we want to use envelopes without those, without the little string buttons.
I bet you it's cheaper to buy, too, without.
Not as cheap as we'd like to think, but...
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Jeff Pratt.
Actually, Jim McDonald.
Oh, Jim McDonald. I was told both.
Thank you, Steve. Good morning, members of the board.
Good morning.
Mr. Powers, my name's Jim McDonald, I'm the director of the Building and Safety Division of the Resource Management Agency. And to take off from something that Steve had just said, you know, some of the best ideas for improving the process comes from those who live and do the process every day. And good people have good ideas. One of the things that we're going to talk about briefly here is the process of floodplain plan checking and floodplain inspections, improvements that we've made in working with the Public Works Agency and the Resource Management Agency. When a building's proposed for construction, and that building is located within a special flood hazard area, the building code and the National Flood Insurance Program both require mitigation to make sure that the building is not going to suffer the effects of flood damage from being, you know, moved or floated off. It needs to be anchored and floodproofed. And in early 2000, FEMA started working with the International Code Council, who is the group that writes the national building codes that are adopted in California. And they moved many of the NFIP-specific construction requirements into the building codes. As they went through the process, what we ended up doing was, California, of course, every three years adopts the model building codes and then makes them, amends them for California's requirements, and then they go out to all the cities and counties in the state. Up until 2011, a person who is going to build a project that is in a special flood hazard area would prepare two sets of plans, submit one set of plans to the Building and Safety Office for review, they would submit an additional set of identical plans for all the construction requirements for floodplains to the Public Works Department. That provided us an opportunity to streamline the process and both save time, grief, and money in the process. So, what we did was, we looked at the plan review process, and we looked at the inspection process, recognizing that these provisions were now both in the building codes and in the NFIP codes. And we moved the... There we go. So, we moved the floodplain plan checking part over into Building and Safety, and we also have since moved the construction inspection portion over. So, now, an applicant, we've eliminated the duplication of that effort. So, the applicant saves plans, they don't have to prepare as many plans, they don't have to respond to corrections from two departments on the same item, and they don't have to pay the fees that they would have had to pay otherwise. Because we're already doing the review of the construction, because we're already there doing the inspections, the addition of floodplain construction, plan review, and the inspections was just the next natural step for a building inspector and a plan reviewer to look at. So, the increases in the efficiency relative to the fees, we had, we saved quite a bit of money in the PWA floodplain fees, and that chart will come up next here. On a per-project basis, prior to adopting the new fee schedule in 2011, the Public Works Agency had a flat fee of, at the time, was $2,672 for a single-family dwelling. And in Building and Safety, with the way we charge our fees for high-fire hazard area construction, if you're in an area that's subject to ember intrusion and wildland fires, we review the building to make sure that it meets those fire construction requirements. Same thing with energy, if it's commercial, we look at it for disabled access. And we use the fee on a sliding scale, the smaller the house, the lower the fee. So, a 1,500-square-foot house in Building and Safety would cost, in the total plan fees for floodplain, would be $368. And then, a 3,000-square-foot house would be a total plan review and inspection fee for floodplain of about $1,900. So, it went from $2,672, transferred the work of the review and inspections to Building and Safety, and were able to reduce the Public Works Plan Review and their inspection fee down to $465, which covers their permitting time and the review of the site plans, and then the inspections, and the plan review is left to the Building and Safety Office. And it seems to work very well, and it, I think it saves everybody money, saves everybody time, and it definitely improves customer service.
How much time are they saving?
Yeah, I was going to say, how much is that time?
How much time are they saving in the process?
As far as time goes, they're probably adding, they're adding, on the Building and Safety side, four to six hours, depending on the scope of the project, but a reduction of, and I'm, I probably could let Jeff speak to that more particularly, but I think it's a reduction from 23 hours of public works time down to about four hours, I think.
And it also expedites the project time, too.
Yeah, yeah. And this is in particular to single-family dwellings, which is 90% of the work that we do. That's a lion's share.
Right, because when they did that before, they'd also have time, they could wait 10, 20 days to get that information back. Right now, it's here, so you save all that time, moves the project through faster.
It does move the project.
Yeah, that's tremendous. That's just great work. You didn't have to do it, but you guys found a way to do it, add customer service, so that saved money, that's great.
Yeah. Had we not responded to these changes and saw the opportunity, we would have had a duplication of effort, which just makes no sense.
And that was a concern, too, Jim, from a lot of people who are now, who are expediting the work and reducing costs and so forth. So, that makes it a lot more, you know, actually, much better for our clients and our constituency.
Absolutely. You bet.
I also appreciate, sometimes you see, like, they need to submit dozens of plans, because there's so many departments have to look at it, so it will also be less costly in just the fact you don't have to submit so much stuff, and that can be pretty overcoming, overwhelming to people who have to look at all this, that needs to be submitted, so I appreciate that, too.
Michael?
Yeah, just to that point, when you have two departments, in a lot of places, that's where things break out, because the consumer's got to go from one to this, but the other for that, so, and it really slows things down, it's frustrating and so forth, so the fact that these two departments work together to streamline it from the consumer's standpoint, I think is excellent, and you see the savings, which is huge. And just a quick note on the Business Services Department, too, they really do hustle, and very timely, high-quality service, that's just been terrific. So, and I think it all reflects a mindset that every dollar counts, so, great work all.
I'd like to thank Ray and Brian, and then Dave Thomas and Building and Safety, really working with us to improve the process and streamline it and make it that much more successful.
It's a team effort, yeah. Paul, anything else, Paul?
Thank you. I just want to add that many of the things we're talking about have to do with the culture evolving and changing here at the county. And one of the things that makes that possible is when we do things like this, we bring examples to share and talk about and encourage other people. When Mr. Powers goes to our new employee orientation and talks about the importance of this, and when you set goals and objectives in our county strategic plan, it's all about how we're looking at our work and the need for constantly improving.
Fantastic, excellent. Michael?
Thank you, Paul, that's just the way we practice it, thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, good job, and thank you.
Excellent. Always good to hear those reports.
Yeah, I'd like to make these reports a part of the regular culture, that's for sure.
Absolutely. Thank you for the team, the team effort. And that is approved, thank you so much. Our next item, we have Mr. Mark Varela. Mark Varela, he's, this is the Ventura County United Way Campaign kickoff, and this is, we're going to welcome Mark Varela, who's the Director, Chief Probation Officer of Ventura County, he's going to be the Chair of the 2012-13 United Way Campaign for the county...
What else doesn't he do?
And I just want to share with you that the county last year, even though we had hard times and a big recession, they still donated $144,000 to the Ventura County United Way. So, I also like, I hope I'm not taking your presentation away here, but I personally like to thank Jeff Pratt, who is the Director of PW Agency, he's stepping down as a United Way Chair, and it was assisted by Glenna, his assistant. So, and I'd like to thank all the past folks and representatives that worked with the United Way. And today's theme is, and I'll let Mark talk about it, what can we do together? So, Mark?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers. It's my pleasure to be the county's coordinator for the annual campaign for United Way, I've been a longtime supporter of the United Way. And typically, how this has been done, at least in the past several years, is that there have been co-chairs. I do not have a co-chair this year, and the reason for that is I'd like to be able, with your board's approval, to do this more than this year. I'd like to come back and do this again, because I really believe in what the United Way stands for, and again, I've been a longtime supporter of it. I do want to thank Jeff, Jeff brought me in as the co-chair last year, and I wanted to thank him for all of his work, even though we were co-chairs, he was the lead co-chair, and then his assistant, Glenna, knew he is, did a lot of work behind the scenes as well. So, I just wanted to thank both Jeff and Glenna for that. The first thing I want to do is introduce Dave Smith, who is the CEO for United Way, to say a few words, and then I'll finish up right after him.
Dave, welcome, Dave.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Thank you, Mark, for the kind introduction, and good morning, Jeff, to you. I would just like to add my thank you for, to Jeff and his team for the great job they did in 2011, 2012, over, just over $144,000. That's a very significant outpouring of support from the county of Ventura, support for the United Way and making a difference for thousands and thousands of Ventura County residents. It's one of our biggest annual campaigns, so it's my pleasure to be here today to help kick off what's a very important fundraising effort in support of the United Way programs and services in the county. I view the campaign as just one more example of the partnership that exists between United Way and the county of Ventura, the partnership that supports programs like 2-on-1, the Financial Empowerment Partnership, Ventura County Together, the Benefit Calculator, the CalFresh Outreach Program of Food Share, and the examples go on and on throughout the year, Day of Caring just a couple of weeks ago, and so forth. We recognize the value of that relationship and the partnership that makes a difference in the lives of many in our county. I'm particularly pleased to hear that Mark wants to stay on for five years, Mark. That's good news, that's the first time that's happened, I think. So, I ask him, watch out what you ask for. But today, I'd like to again thank Jeff for his outstanding leadership, and we have a plaque here that we'd like to present to you, and to Mark for the great work that he's done.
Thank you.
And if I may, I'd like to introduce several members of our team who are here in support of the campaign, Rachel Parcell, and Eve Liebman, and Ron Goldens, all sitting back here. Stand up, guys.
Do we have them standing? Yeah.
And of course, thank you for your continued support and board leadership. Matt Carroll's a member of the United Way Board today, thanks, Matt, for your presence. Thanks very much, Mark.
I do want to mention that each agency for the county selects an agency representative, and these are people who are enthusiastic, and they go back to their departments and spread the news and encourage poster participants, and just really encourage giving, especially during this time of year. And I ask that the department representatives be here today so that they can be acknowledged. So, I'd like all the departmental representatives to stand up that are here today. They have a lot of energy, and right after this hearing, we're going to go over to the Pacific Conference Room to judge the poster contest.
Oh, fantastic.
We have some several entries that we're going to choose from, and then I will bring it back to your board to show you what the final poster's going to look like. Those posters will be posted in all of our offices and institutions, and the pledge cards will be coming out in next month, and hopefully, we can top the $144,000 figure that we did last year.
And thank you, Mark, for volunteering for the next five years, you know, that's a lot. And I also want to thank, you know, the board, you know, thanks all the employees for their giving, you know, it's hard times, and I know it's difficult to give money, but to give, that money is really put to good use, you know, for the community. And Jeff, thank you so much for your participation, and Mark, thank you for taking over. And also, one other thing that Dave did not say is a Santa to the Sea, Dave, we're going to have that pretty soon, too, so, to raise some money. Santa to the Sea Drive, we're going to have the half marathon with Mike Barber, and hopefully we'll raise some money there, too, so... But, Mark, thank you so much for your efforts. Appreciate you.
And again, the theme for this year is imagine what we can do together. So, that is the theme, you'll see the posters coming out shortly, and...
Thank you.
I'll report back. Thank you very much.
And just really thank you also to the dedicated board and the folks behind the United Way efforts. Nice to see you here, and it is a lot of hard work, I know that, so thanks for sticking with it, it really benefits people.
Thank you.
Member of the... Thank you.
Okay, our next item is, it's a receivable file. So, that's approved, thank you so much, thank you, Mark. Our next item is National Food Day in Regal. Can you come up, I'm going to read this. This is a resolution from the Board of Supervisors proclaiming or recognizing National Food Day, whereas the health and well-being of our citizens is primary concern for the county of Ventura, and whereas over half of the adults and over one-third of the children in Ventura County are overweight or obese, and where curbing unhealthy food marketing aimed at children is vital importance in order to combat high obesity rates and raise generations of healthy children, and whereas promoting access to local, safe, and healthy food is a critical factor in improving citizens' risk for obesity and chronic diseases, and where supporting sustainable family farms and local agricultural benefits to our local, help our local community, where expanding excess food and reducing hunger is critical importance to assist those who live in food deserts. And therefore, be resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors thus hereby designate Wednesday, October 24th, as National Food Day in Ventura County, and urge all citizens to participate in the activities planned therefore. And be, further be resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors affirms its recognition of the needs of Ventura County residents to make healthy choices regarding their intake of food, and applauds Ventura County Public Health for multiple ways they respond to those needs every day of the year in Ventura County. And I'll present this to you. Do you want to share some words?
Thank you again, good morning, Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers, members in the community, thank you for this resolution, on behalf of the folks here, that are the actual gardeners and the staff, and with your support and support from healthcare agency administration, we do a lot of good work out in the community, including the Community Garden Project, and this Food Day Resolution is really very much welcomed, and we thank you. It is, National Food Day is very much modeled after Earth Day to try to draw attention to the issue of the importance, of course, of food with regard to availability of food and the quality of food, and sustainable farming and so on. So, we really thank you again for your support and for this resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Picture?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a, is that receivable file, or we just, no? Okay. And I was just asking you, they should have brought some vegetables, and they said they had some tamales, so we kind of... Now we're talking. I think we missed out there. Okay, our next item is, this is a resolution from the Board of Supervisors proclaiming the National Bullying Prevention Month of October 2012, and we're going to call, ah, the boss. Whereas feeling safe is integral to all overall wellness, whereas students who experience bullying are more likely to suffer from depression, low self-esteem, health problems, poor grades, suicidal thoughts, where recent studies also indicate that there is an elevated risk of substance abuse amongst adolescents who are bullied, and where a recent U.S. survey shows that one in five students report having been bullied sometimes or more often, whereas studies have shown that children have been identified as bullied by age eight, and six times more likely to have a criminal conviction by age 24. And whereas bullying victims are between two and nine times more likely to consider suicide than non-victims, according to studies by the Yale University, whereas cyberbullying may start as early as fourth grade due to smartphones' availability among children, whereas students who witness bullying are more, are less feeling fearful, powerless to act guilty, and are sometimes attempted to participate, those folks that don't are not bullied. Whereas Ventura County Behavioral Health has supported bullying prevention in schools, districts throughout the county, reaching to an estimated over 8,000 students, whereas Ventura County Behavioral Health is committed to altering the setting and circumstances which contribute to mental health and substance abuse problems, including victimization appears by kids. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors thus hereby proclaim October 2012 as National Bully Prevention Month in Ventura County, to demonstrate a continued support to the commitment to prevent an onset of mental health and substance abuse issues by addressing bullying in our schools, and this is presented on this date, the 23rd. Melanie?
Good morning, members of the board, supervisors Aragoza and Mr. Powers. I don't think there's anyone in this boardroom that hasn't been somehow affected by bullying at some point in their lives. Being bullied, being the perpetrator, or witnessing somebody else being victimized at the hands or words of a bully creates a lasting effect. I can myself vividly remember the first time I witnessed bullying, it was about 40-some-odd years ago. We are familiar with the mid-1800s, children's rhymes, "Sticks and stones will break my bones, but words will never hurt me." Well, we know that's not true. You don't have to be a mental health professional to understand that sticks and stones may break bones, and that words break hearts. There are literally hundreds of heartbreaking stories. I was looking online last night to prepare for this, and I was really struck by one, Phoebe Prince, who hung herself after three months of bullying by a group of girls in her high school regarding a date she was having with a senior football... Mental Health Services Act funding has allowed our department to partner with schools to implement a universal prevention approach to bullying. Backed by 35 years of research and successful worldwide implementation, the Olvea's Bullying Prevention Program is a long-term, system-wide program that has been found to reduce bullying and to improve the social climate of classrooms, and to reduce related antisocial behaviors such as vandalism and truancy. Through the Mental Health Services Act, we fund the training, we fund the program materials, and we support ongoing technical assistance, and we've provided funding for special projects, two of which you can see here. One was anti-bullying bracelets that say, "Don't stand by, stand up," because, of course, there's oftentimes witnesses to bullying events, and these witnesses sometimes are really in a bullied position themselves, where they feel very helpless to act and to help. And we also have work... Have been starting work on a bullying prevention photonovella, which will be educational for parents, and will be available for distribution in Spanish in the winter of this year. This work would not be possible without the participation of schools and the willingness of administrators and teachers and other school personnel to take the training and examine their school environments, and make the changes necessary to support both the physical and emotional well-being of students. Their leadership and commitment is making this work their priority, and we feel that's exemplary. To date, Oxnard, Ojai, Santa Paula, Las Vergenes School District, which happens to be in LA County, but is part of our Selpa here, our local Selpa, and Soma School Districts have participated in this effort. And I'd like to recognize the representatives here today from the Santa Paula School District, and if you want to stand up and come up here, we're going to... I know I have a photo op, so I'll get you up here for that. Dr. Paul Choney, who is the Superintendent of Schools from Santa Paula, Cheryl Meisenheimer, who's the Principal of Glen City School, Frida Friend, who's the Director of Special Education, and Frida's been a longtime partner with our department through our special education programs. Carrie Ann Shutey, who is our Behavior Health Manager, working on this project. Dr. Jane Wagmeister, who's the Director of Curriculum and Instruction from Ventura County Office of Education. Lorraine Brown, who's our county contact person with the County Office of Education. And I think I get everybody, I hope? Okay. So again, I'd like to thank the Board for your support of our prevention, early intervention projects, and it is our hope, if we save one individual from the terrorism, really, of this bullying acts and prevent a suicide, we will have done a wonderful job, I think. So thank you.
And I understand that cyberbullying is really, really troubling now, and how do we educate the parents on that side?
Part of this... One of the nice things about this program is that there are many strategies involved. I mean, there's classroom approaches, there's school-wide approaches, and community approaches, and part of the universal strategies are to educate parents. And the problem with cyberbullying is you can't escape it. You can be in the quiet of your own home, where you should feel safe and open, and get a text message. And so I think that's one of the things that's made the kind of bullying that's happening today very devastating.
Chairman of the Board, County Executive Officer, and Board Members, I just want to thank the county for the tremendous support that they've provided us through Behavior Health, that has enabled us to provide training for our teachers and provide the services for students in this anti-bullying effort. It is a tremendous problem in our schools, and it shows in every facet of their education, from their home life, through their school life, through their grades, through their progress into high school and into college. And without this help from the county, we would not have been able to provide these types of programs for our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you tremendously.
Thank you.
Want to take a photo? Anybody else? We'll take a photo, then. You want to...
There you go. Yay!
Roberta? What? Close session next?
Not yet.
Which... Oh. Judge, I'm sorry. Okay.
Item 27.
Yes.
Good morning.
I paid my taxes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Chairman Zaragoza, the members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Powers, good morning. I'm Stephen Hints, Ventura County's Treasurer, Tax Collector. I bring to you today a request that you authorize me to rescind the sale of one of the properties which I sold at our recent tax delinquency auction. I wrote a letter which very completely states what happened that causes me to ask for the rescission, but in a nutshell, it is that after the sale, it became apparent to me that a co-owner of one of the properties had been deceived by the other co-owner, and had been misrepresented to in so significant a way that they were deprived of their interest in the property through what I would call a species of real estate fraud. And I do not believe that my office should be engaged in that, nor should the county countenance that. And we have the ability to make everybody whole by simply rescinding the sale. I have to get... County Council and I believe that we have to get the authority of the Board to do that, although there is a gap in the legislation that does not specifically address the timing that's raised by this. It's clear that County Council and I could rescind the sale, or could pull a property off the auction list before the auction, and it's clear that I have to come to the Board of Supervisors after a tax deed is issued. But the period in between, which is where we are now, is not addressed, and so, out of an abundance of caution, I bring this to the Board, asking for your approval, your authorization for me to rescind this sale.
And we didn't have any concerns from the buyers on that?
The buyer has... I talked with him several times. He has signed an agreement to have the sale rescinded. I have, according to statute, refunded him his money with interest at the pool rate.
Good.
And the defrauded co-owner has paid all of the taxes and penalties that were due in a check that we're holding in our trust account. So...
Go ahead.
That's where we are. They still have their own remedies that they can pursue against the other partner who caused all this to happen, let's say. But the county is whole, and the buyer is whole, and they have private remedies to proceed with if they wish.
And everybody's in agreement?
Yes.
And the... Did the county have to pay the interest, or did the person who... I know there's not much interest anymore.
We paid the interest. It was like $2.
$2.
It was a pretty small amount of interest, partly because I decided to go ahead and grant the refund before I actually had your authority to do so.
Great. Okay. Got a motion, and I'll second that.
It's good that the party that purchased it was willing to give it up. It would have gotten pretty complicated.
Well, he... I mentioned that it was clear to me that the defrauded property owners were going to sue somebody, and in order to protect their interests, they had to sue him, too. And at that point, he lost interest in further ownership in the property.
Good work.
Sounds like you weren't excited about this letter.
It seems like because it was such a fraud that it's difficult to avoid that kind of thing in the future. I don't know if you know of something you can do to help avoid it, but it just seems like this was an unusual case, and a fraud was perpetrated.
In every incident Supervisor Parks, there is something to be learned.
That's right.
And since this was the first auction that we've had in several years, the whole auction was something to learn from, and we have made a couple of procedural changes, which we hope will reduce what already was a very slight likelihood that something like this would happen, but I'm hopeful.
For example, this, the notification of all owners of a trust, maybe something that would be helpful, huh?
Well, the trust owners did not maintain a current address with the assessor, and so the notices that we sent to them were returned unserved. One thing that we're going to do in the future is, when we get down to the time of putting these properties up for auction, is we're going to make a more aggressive effort to locate those. But the problem was, we thought we were dealing with somebody who had the exclusive power of management of the property. In other words, the co-owner led us to believe over a period of two years that he was the spokesperson for everybody, and we believed that right up until the time that the trust appeared and said, "Wow, how could this have happened?"
Thank you. That was a close one.
And the title company... The title company was involved in this, too? Or...
No, we never... We never... It never came to the point of issuing a tax deed.
To that point?
So there is no title company. There's nothing to do in the clerk's office where we can dispose of the...
It was good to hear you just said for two years. So these things don't just happen overnight. It takes a long time to get to this point.
Well, no, because the property was delinquent for five years. And in... And we had continuing contact in the last two years with the owner who misrepresented to the other parties.
Thank you. Well, that's approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Any other... Thank you so much. And now we're going to close session. Any announcements, Leroy?
There will be no announcements.
And we'll adjourn from close session.
So we can adjourn from close session.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.